A light call to order the Malibu City Council Special Meeting of July 21st, 2021. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting. At this screen you can click onto the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting. Once the item is called no further speaker signups will be allowed so please make sure you visit malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. And I have a roll call.
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Urein?
Here.
Mayor Proton Silverstein? Mayor Proton Silverstein, I'm not sure if you're frozen.
He looks frozen and he's very still. One of the two...oh, there he goes.
Here.
Mayor Grisanti?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Terrific.
Here.
Okay, do we have any public speakers on the closed session item?
No, you don't have any speakers for this item.
Okay. We will now recess to closed session to discuss the items listed on the closed session agenda. We will rejoin this conference at 5:00 PM to begin the regular session and hear the closed session report.
You there?
Hi.
Hi.[118.81]
I see... Still short one councilperson, I think. Am I wrong?
Karen.
There's Karen.
I don't see Karen.
Okay. She on the second page, maybe?
No.
We don't have her in the meeting yet. We're looking.
Okay.
There she is.
Okay. I'd like to call and order the Malibu City Council Special Meeting of July 21, 2021. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record in the public. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Hare?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Bering?
Here.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Grisanti?
Here.
Motion... You have a quorum.
Okay, may I lead you in the voice in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a closed session report?
Yes, Mayor Grisanti, members of the council, good afternoon. There were three items on the closed session agenda. The first two involved existing litigation. SMSA, the partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, had the other case entitled Malibu Township Council, both against the city of Malibu. The council received an update on both cases and discussed potential settlement communications. Other than that, the council took no reportable actions. The third item involved the potential initiation of litigation. As to that item, the council took no reportable actions. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Kelsey, may I have a, I'm sorry. May I have an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Can you, can you take a roll call vote for us, Kelsey?
Was Councilmember Pearson the second?
Bruce was, I think, actually.
It was, it was multi. Everybody wanted a second at the same time.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on July 19th, 2021, with the amended agenda posted on July 20th, 2021.
Thank you. Our first item, number 1A, is nuisance abatement, and I believe that we're going to get a staff report from Susan Duñez. Are you available, Susan?
Yeah, sorry, here I am. All right, good evening, mayor and council members. What do we have? Tonight, we're here to look at Malibu Municipal Code, Chapter 8.28, which is our nuisance abatement code. Next slide, please. So a little background. As you know, we've had quite a few encampment fires, more than 17, just this last year. And really, we saw the uptick starting last fall, which kind of brought our attention to, you know, what can we do to remedy this problem? We currently, you know, have aggressively gone after letters of agency from the Sheriff's Department, which allows them to remove trespassers from private property. However, removing people doesn't solve the whole problem. You also need to remove all the items that are left behind, because, you know, lessons learned has showed us, shown us that if you leave the stuff behind, it's almost like leaving an empty apartment ready for someone else to move in. So you really need to move all the stuff, clean it out, to send the message that this is not a place for people to live. Some property owners are really good about doing that. Some are not as good about doing that in a timely manner and sometimes not at all. So, you know, in looking at our current nuisance code, we started really looking at that, and we, we took it to the Public Safety Commission in April. And after looking at quite a few codes, like five from other cities very similar to Malibu, like Agora, Laguna Beach, Calabasas, places where there was brush, fire concerns, things like that. So I really took a deep look at those codes. I brought lots of examples to the commission in April, and I boiled it down to possibly addressing the definition to make it more clear what a nuisance was, and then also strengthening our summary abatement section of the code. The commission liked the idea, but they wanted me to go back and reach out to other cities to kind of see what's working well in other cities, just to kind of see if there's, you know, some tips we could learn. So I did that. I didn't really get any new insights from that, but it was, you know, good to talk to people in the other cities. So I came back to the next meeting in June with more specific recommendations to, one, amend the definition so it includes language that specifically calls out threats to adjacent properties and threats to the welfare of the general population. And then also with the summary abatement section to change it so that it did not have to require council action, that a city manager could do it, because all the other codes I looked at delegated that authority to either a city manager or a department head. And then, when I was working with the city attorney's office, it was suggested that we also include some language regarding fire and biohazards, storage of cooking and heating equipment, and items such as that. Anyway, so next slide. So the city attorney's office, you know, based on the input provided by the commission and myself and samples that I provided, drafted an amended code. And so the new sections in the proposed amendment to strengthen the definition, and these are just the new sections that I have here, because the language that was already there is still there for the most part. But now, it's recommended that we're adding any condition of a property that is injurious or potentially injurious to adjacent properties, potentially injurious to adjacent properties. And then also specifically calling out the accumulation of trash, biohazards, fire and safety hazards, you know, items that facilitate activity that could create a risk of wildfire creates another public health hazard. I feel like this makes it a little more clear. I mean, our current code is fine. It's very broad, very encompassing. But I think by providing some examples of the types of things that we view as a nuisance can be helpful to us and also helpful to property owners. Next slide. So with the summary abatement, it's going to be sort of, you know, a simple amendment, just adding that instead of requiring that it go to the city council to make a summary abatement happen, that the city manager can abate a nuisance when there is an immediate threat to public health or safety. And I assure you, this is really for those really egregious situations where it just can't wait. It can't even wait for, you know, trying to call a special meeting of the council. It needs to be abated immediately. So it probably wouldn't be used very often, but it is, I think, helpful to have that as an option when needed. Next slide. So if the city manager has delegated this authority, of course, it would be, require some notice. So the city manager would need, or designate, would need to reach out to the property owner and make, you know, a concerted effort to contact that person, advise them of the hazard, and request that they immediately abate the hazard or safety problem. Next slide. And then the abatement, if they refuse, or like if you can't get a hold of them, they refuse, or they fail to abate it within a reasonable period of time, then the city manager could at that time, if it seems like, you know, this is really a critical safety threat to the greater community, they are then empowered to abate the nuisance. And that would include all costs to clear the property, including the cost of, you know, potentially hiring a biohazard treatment service, which is frequently needed, because frequently you have, you know, biohazards, you know, human feces, needles, other items that you, you don't want just anyone doing this. You need proper personal protective equipment to get that done. Next slide. Then, of course, the cost would then be, you know, turn to the property owner. We would send them the bill. And that would go through the regular process that already exists in our nuisance code when we are recovering costs for nuisances. Next slide. So I just wanted to give some context, too, that this is part of a broader effort to try to get a handle on the encampment fires that we've been having. So one of them being this one, ensuring owners of unbelted property understand their responsibilities and holding them accountable to eliminating fire hazards. Also, we've stepped up our ability to implement and enforce the very high fire hazard severity zone. There aren't a lot of locations in this city where this is applicable, but we've developed a sign that we're going to be installing in those locations. One specific location is Legacy Park, where it will be, there will be a sign stating that the area is closed and do not enter based on that code. And that would be the interior part of the park, not, you know, the walkways that everybody is free to enjoy, but the interior parts that are not meant for hiking or walking and exploring. And then, we're also looking at developing some type of emergency plan to remove all encampments from brush within the city and to be able to keep them clear using both the nuisance code and the very high fire hazard severity zone. And this is, you know, as we're approaching this very dangerous fire season, I think it's going to be critical that we have a good plan to get a handle on this. And in this, we're also working with our state and county partners. I've had several meetings already with State Parks, who's on board, talking with MRCA, National Parks, because it really needs to be a regional effort on this, because if we just clear them from the areas within our city, that doesn't solve our whole problem. They need to be cleared from the areas outside of our city, the Topanga area, all these areas. So we're working hand in hand and also with Henry Stern's office. We're going to start some regular meetings to come up with a regional strategy and then work in concert to get this done. Next slide. And that's the end of my staff report, and I'm available for questions.
Do we do questions first, or do we do public comment?
Mayor Grisanti, you don't have any speakers sign up for this item.
Well, then I guess we do questions next. It looks like a great plan to me. I see Mikey and then Steve.
All right, I just, I just have a few questions, I think mostly related, hopefully. This one may be a little outside the scope of what's here, but have we been able to extend the amount of time a letter of agency is valid?
I have not had a chance to pursue that possibility. It's on the long list of things to do. I'm not sure, from talking to Lieutenant Braden, I'm not sure how easily that can be done, because it's, you know, determined at a much higher level than Lost Hills. But I do think it is something we need to look at, because one year goes by pretty fast.
Okay, yeah, it's really fast, and we need some sort of system to track them, I would think. I mean, it would overwhelm me, I know that. So this ordinance, let me make sure I have this right, and I have read it multiple times, but still. It's mostly aimed at private property.
That is where all of our problems have been. You know, we have the very high fire hazard severity zone ordinance to deal with public properties at this time. But right now, to deal with private properties, all we have is the nuisance code. So that's why we're looking at this.
I just want to confirm that, because in your presentation, you talked about public and private property, you know, Legacy Park, et cetera. So, but this ordinance is really focused more on private property.
Right.
Okay. When you talk to other cities, did you discover any legal issues with this kind of approach that you had to be careful of or avoid, or what was the status of that?
No, you know, honestly, all of them, they have all avoided having to go this far, because it's not as simple as it might seem. So usually, they've been able to get cooperation before they had to go so far as do a summary abatement and then try to get reimbursed for those costs. So none of the people I spoke with had actually done it.
Oh, okay, interesting. So that leads me to the next question. So do we, and I guess we do, but are, do we have the legal ability to create an ordinance that allows us to go on private property in this manner?
I'm gonna let John Cottie answer that.
As my person, I believe that we do. I believe that when someone is using their property to the detriment of the properties around them, summary abatement procedures can be used to go onto that property and remedy the abatement if they're unwilling to do so. There are procedural safeguards in the ordinance, notice and other things, but if a property owner is refusing to remedy an imminently dangerous condition, the city has the right to own that property and remedy it for itself, handling the property.
So what I'm wondering about then, since this is really, it's mostly aimed at fire hazard, does this end up also including the properties in Malibu we hear nonstop about that refuse to clean up the debris on their properties? And the language, while more defined, I'm not sure if it catches that or if it's mainly just aimed, because it is just aimed at homeless camps. So that would be my question on that.
Mayor, councilperson.
Thanks, Mayor.
What this ordinance is designed to do is add a definition of nuisance that encompasses some of the more, some of the problems that the city is facing now. To the extent someone's maintaining their property in violation of the code, you always have traditional nuisance abatement, and you can use the summary abatement procedures against those types of properties to the extent they're creating an imminent threat to public safety. So it doesn't have to be something as specific as a fire hazard. A person could be using their property to the detriment of others. They could be operating some kind of drug lab, by way of an example, which we could certainly use this, we could certainly use this procedure to summarily abate that nuisance.
Right, I just suspect some of these people that have ongoing issues with the properties that people won't clean up are gonna maybe look at this for help, I'm just, I'm guessing. But it sure wouldn't surprise me to get nonstop emails about that with certain properties. And as far as having the city manager or designate able to move on this, I think that's exactly the city manager's job, is to make things happen quickly, especially when it comes to the safety of life and property. So the one thing that was left dangling to me in this is the reasonable time for abatement. How do we define reasonable time? I don't, I actually don't have a clue what that is when I read this personally.
Reasonable is a term of legal art that is defined by the nature of the emergency. How much time you would give them to abate that nuisance depends on what the condition on the property is. The more severe the property, the less time you give them to abate is more likely reasonable. So it really just depends on the nature of the emergency.
So it's a drug lab with tons of chemicals. Yeah, the abatement time is about four minutes. I get it, I get, I get. Okay, all right, thank you. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Steve, you're up.
Yeah, John, a word or something of legal art. That was a great answer. I mean, I gotta use that at some point. That was, Susan, that last slide you put up, they had the mitigation stuff. Can you put that back up again just for a second, if possible?
Sure, Harkey, can you get that?
Okay. The implemented and enforced high fire hazard severity ordinance, develop an emergency plan. Who's gonna develop that emergency plan? When do you think we'll see something on that?
Well, we have something drafted. I'm working with a few folks from the current homelessness working group. Couple of us that were extremely concerned about this situation have been drafting something up that includes kind of an outline of when you would activate the plan, like how bad do conditions need to get? And this is supposed to be before a fire starts, right? We don't want to wait before a fire starts. But we need to have conditions that I believe are defensible so that people don't think we're just using it, right, to remove people. So right now, I mean, that's looking like, you know, when Lefal moisture is at like, or 70% less, when humidity is at a certain level. I don't remember right off the top of my head, but we've been kind of crafting that on how, what that would look like. And so the idea is to have something that's triggered by extreme fire weather conditions, and then also have an end date of when you would end it, when conditions approve. Essentially, what I'm thinking of is treating fire weather like you would a hurricane coming. On the east coast, it's pretty routine. When a hurricane is coming, they have whole emergency procedures. On the east coast, it's pretty routine. When a hurricane is coming, they have whole emergency procedures to get people out of the danger area. Those areas may or may not actually get hit by the hurricane, but they evacuate them anyways. So I'm kind of approaching it in the same way. When we have extreme fire weather. It's like a hurricane that's coming. It may or may not hit us, but we still need to move people out of the areas. And in particular, right now, we're looking at like the unhoused because for the unhoused. Even if they're not the ones who start the fire, they're gonna be in extreme danger for their own life safety. I, I can't imagine some of them, based on where I've seen them, how they would get out in time. And then also you have the possibility that when fire department is trying to put the fire out. That they get distracted by having to rescue, um, unhoused individuals who are up in the, you know, the mountains there. And we don't want that to happen, cause it's same principle that they, you know, close parks during red flag. But we wanna back it up even before it triggers a red flag, because I think that's too late. I think we need to start clearing out the brush sooner. And I proposed this conceptual idea to State Parks and they love it and they're on board. So in fact, I just got an email today and we're gonna be working through Henry Stern's office as the coordinating point. To coordinate the other agencies being National Parks and MRCA to figure out how we best do this. Um, there's a lot of things we'd have to get in place because. When you evacuate, if, if you're, if you're trying to say it in those terms, you're, you have to provide a shelter. So I've reached out to see if it's possible to open the county's winter shelters early and call fire weather shelters. You know, so that you can at least, uh, provide an option for people. So those are the kinds of things that, that we're, we're looking into the ability to do those types of things. So that's kind of what this plan is looking at.
It's, it's coming along, that's good.
It's coming along and I, I mean, I was hoping to get a staff report done today with some of these items to bring to the next meeting, but I got kinda tied up with this. But it's, it's, it's very close to coming forward.
Okay, one last question. The, the second, uh, implemented and forced the very high fire hazard severity zone ordinance. And you made a statement in doing that, there, there are only selected areas in Malibu where that exists. Is that?
No, but I meant by is there's only a few areas where it's really a place where you would need to close it. Because within that ordinance, it's basically you're saying areas that have been deemed like to, that are closed. That, that are public property. So like the interior of Legacy Park is a perfect example. It's public property. But we can close it because it's not built for, for walking, hiking, et cetera. So we can close it.
It, it only applies to public property.
Public property. So this is for public property. So the ci- it's city public property. But I can, uh, I'm already talked to State Parks. They'd be happy to also put our signs. On the areas that they have jurisdiction over, uh, specifically like, uh, Malibu Lagoon Creek area. They have a lot of problems there. Um, they'd be happy to put the signs there. It just gives them extra teeth. I mean, they do have some codes that they use, but they're happy to. Use any and every code they can, especially to be able to post that the area is closed. Under our ordinance could be helpful to them and I plan to do the same with MRCA, see if they would allow us to post some signs, especially at the base of. Like on Malibu Road where people frequently go up into the MRCA property area there. That's not really a, a designated hiking trail. Um, so.
All right, Susan, thank you very much. Keep plugging, head, head in the right direction. Thank you.
Bruce, you're next.
Hey, thanks. So first of all, as a general matter, I, I love this. I've been pushing for this. I think we need something like this. We need more than this. But this is a good, this is a good movement for now. Um. Um, there's some of the language of this proposed ordinance that I, I wanna talk about and maybe we can make some tweaks to it, maybe not. One is, um, at, in the definition, at one point of a, of a, of a nuisance, the word wildfire is used. I don't know why we're limiting it to wildfire. A fire is a fire. Any fire has the potential to be a wildfire, but any fire has the potential to harm people and property. So I would take out the word wild if others would agree with that when we get to the point of moving for this. Um, we use the word undeveloped property. I don't know whether technically vacant property, which has been developed, but no longer is being, you know, like warehouse has burned. If that's undeveloped property or if that's vacant property or if there's some other technical terms, I'd wanna make sure we're covering those properties as well. Um, we say that the owner or the person who's got possession of the property is, is liable. I would like it to say the owner and the other person. And I'd like to use the words, which are terms of art jointly and severally liable, which means the city can go after either or both of them. And it's up to them between themselves to figure out who's responsible after one of them at least has paid us. Um, so I'd like that change proposed. Um, and the word immediately, which is used a number of times, um, when it comes to why it has to be done. I, I think that immediately, there's gonna be very few things that need to be done immediately. But it's reasonable to have a provision that says. Where there's insufficient time to go through the ordinary process of a non-summary abatement. That's really the concept here. You can't wait to go to court and force somebody to move. You gotta do it sometime between now and the time a court would do it. It doesn't have to be five minutes from now or even tomorrow, but the, the city has to have an ability. When there's not enough time to go get a court order. So I would like to see language that broadens the circumstances in which it can be used from immediately. Um, other comments I have are, um, uh, these are for future, but I'd like, what I'd like to see also brought back. Oh, first of all, does, do we have a concept in our code of criminal trespass, not simply. Civil trespass, but such that when someone trespasses without, without consent. Or squatting on pers- on private property, it's a crime as opposed to simply a, um, toward to the owner?
Uh, Councilor Silverstein, that would be in the, uh, penal code in those.
So it is a crime.
There's a, a trust, a lengthy trespass section in the penal code that delineates, uh, several, several. Um, acts of conduct that constitute a crime, yes, et cetera.
So I, I, if, if we don't have it already, I think we ought to have some kind of provision that makes it a criminal act, perhaps a felony, if we can go that far. To squat on private property without the permission of the owner. Because then that gives further teeth to this. It doesn't even need to be a nuisance. It's just a circumstance, which itself will give rise to danger. The other is if we can do it, a ordinance that obviates the letter of agency. So that the ordinance itself gives the sheriff, the agency and, and all property owners. I don't know if we could do that or not. I'm just asking that we consider that. Um, also, I'd like us to look into what legal action we can take to require. The owners of private property that are adjoining Malibu to clean up their properties. Because, just because, you know, the last couple fires in Tuna didn't start in Malibu. They started outside of Malibu. But they represent a giant threat to Malibu. So this ordinance isn't gonna be enough. We need to be able to take action. Um, even if it's legal action against our, um, neighboring communities. And the last thing I have on this is Susan did say towards the very end that when we evacuate people, we have to provide shelter. I, I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't understand why when someone is criminally trespassing and creating a fire danger. By where they are and what they're doing, we have to give them an alternative place to not commit their crime. So I, I, I don't think that's the law. I don't know why that was said.
I just, to clarify, I was referring to emergency situations according to the California Emergency Services Act. When you evacuate an area, you are compelled to provide a shelter operation, a shelter option. That's what I was referring to.
Okay, fair, but this is not an event, just to make clear, this is not an event. Forcing our nuisance law is not an evacuation. And also, I, I wanna be clear, the entire city of Malibu is a high fire density zone. It's been delineated as such by the state. So we don't need to be distinguishing one parcel from another in Malibu. This statute, if we adopt it, can apply full stop throughout Malibu. The question is simply whether there's an immediate danger that require, or a, a danger that requires a summary abatement. Or whether the city has time to go get a court order to deal with it. But we have a fire danger for everyone that's living in public in Malibu, full stop. So I don't know how we're gonna fashion, how we fashion when we get to the point of making the motion, the changes I have proposed, but. Uh, I, I, if others agree with them, I'd like to see those changes made.
And Councilor Silverstein, I, I would note for the, for the group that I did, uh, have a conversation with you today about, uh, a lot of those changes. And I have created a draft, um, that incorporates those changes. I thought they were good changes. And, um, I think you've outlined the majority of them. There are a few others, um.
No, actually, John, I, I, I saw what you changed and I like it. I saw a lot of the things you omitted that were fine too. These are the few cleanup ones that I still thought were important.
Oh, these are additional to what I sent over earlier.
These are, these were a few of the ones that you excluded from the, all of the ones you excluded, which were fine, which I still think are important.
Okay, got it.
All right, Ian, see your hand.
I was just gonna comment on, on what Bruce had to say. I counted eight different items. Um, the first two. Were yeses to me. Then I started having questions after that. So before we go to motion, you know, I, I, and I couldn't take very complete notes. Cause it was moving pretty quick. Um, the one where we could, uh, charge the owner or the tenant, I think it was. I don't know the legality of how that works. I don't know if that's a civil issue. Um, there was something about the word immediately. I was having, I didn't quite follow. So there's a few things, criminal trespass. Uh, do we get to make all those kinds of laws?
Maybe that was going beyond the changes to this ordinance. That was just things I said I'd like to see down the line.
Okay, like an ordinance for letter of agency.
Yeah, there were only, there were five.
Private property out of the boo, uh, would be probably talk to the county. I got you, okay.
Yeah, no, there were five words, wildfire versus fire.
Yes.
Vacant property, owner and possessor, jointly liable, and then some better words than immediate.
Talk to me, I guess, let me, let me ask John about owner or what was the other word? Owner or?
Well, it's, it currently says owner or person of possession. I'm just saying change or to and.
Uh, John, does that have any legal implications that we should worry about?
I don't know. I don't believe it does. I think changing to and is appropriate.
Okay, so that's a yes. And then the next one, Bruce?
Jointly and severally liable rather than just liable, cause. It's, it's a, that's a concept that's in the law in many places.
Okay, um, and then I'm sorry to ask again, you said it twice now. Um, the word immediately, you, you were changing that to another definition. I had trouble following.
Yeah, it was words to the effect of insufficient time to permit the city to go through the ordinary legal channels of getting a court order, but words that capture that thought.
Okay, yeah, cause the word immediately might mean different things to different people. Um, so I, I get that, okay? All right, thank you. That clarifies that for me.
Is that a motion, Mikey?
Uh, well, I don't know if any, if everyone's done, um, I would make it Bruce's motion and I'm seconding, seconding it is how I would look at it, cause.
Bruce, are you happy with your motion as modified by Mikey?
Yes, except that we do need to get the precise words at the end, cause I don't think we can adopt some general concept.
So we'll have to go through and restate it, but in theory, I'm, all I was really trying to say is I agree with those changes.
Okay. And I, I just would like to say that as far as the, the clearing of the brush around, I had a meeting with the, the Pacific Palisades people. Who've gotten together and have a very, uh, robust, uh, situation as far as monitoring the brush that they have in their neighborhoods. And, uh, their, their, their existing relationship with the Los Angeles Police Department as far as someone going out and doing it. And it, it's, this should not be something that we do only when we think fire is imminent. People should be in the habit of, of knowing they can't stay there. I don't care if it's raining. They shouldn't be allowed to stay in the brush. Uh, if, if we know they're there, they oughta, they oughta be asked to leave. So. It's a broken windows theory all over again. So can we take a shot at Reese, at stating, oh, Karen, I'm sorry. Karen?
That's okay. Um, Susan, I wanna thank you for all the work that's gone into this. Uh, I think it'll continue to evolve, but I was just gonna ask if John could recap. This language of the motion for us because it's, it's been kind of a moving target and I think, uh. I, I think we're headed in the right direction. I just wanna know where we are right now.
Sure, um, we're taking out the word undeveloped land. We're taking out the word wild from fire. We're adding property owners and other persons in lawful possession of property. Um, and in section eight point two eight point one O, we're gonna add a concept. And perhaps the easiest way to do it is to simply refer to the section that talks about formal nuisance abatement procedures. But that section as proposed, we is notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter to the contrary. If city manager determines that a nuisance presents an imminent threat to the public safety. Or poses, um. Or poses an imminent danger to life or surrounding property. Such that the condition must be immediately removed or otherwise abated. And then perhaps we can add, and the procedure set forth in section. Um, the pre- the following section that deals with formal nuisance abatement proceeding, proceedings. Um. Cannot be complied with or, or must be dispensed with, something along those lines, the city manager may have summarily abated nuisance. So that was still going off the top of my head, but referencing the section below such that we don't have time to engage in that formal process. Um, we're gonna summarily abate the nuisance.
Well, can I, can I take a shot at that?
Yes.
First of all, John, I, I didn't say get rid of the concept of undeveloped property. Make it undeveloped or vacant. And, you know, undeveloped or vacant property.
Got it, making that change.
broader. Okay, you, you got the owner and possessor, but you didn't mention jointly and severally liable. So that's a change.
That's, that's following, that's right. That's, that's following down.
And here's language, I can read it to you, that I did write down, that I think captures the, the last point, which is. It currently says, notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter to the contrary. The city manager may summarily, summarily abate a nuisance and I would change what follows that to the following words. If the city manager determines that the danger posed by the nuisance to the health, safety or welfare of the community. Neighborhood or other person or other property is too great to allow the nuisance to remain unabated. While legal proceedings are pursued to compel the property owner to abate the nuisance.
My, my only comment to that, Councilor Silverstein, is that. You don't necessarily need to do a legal proceeding. It's an administrative proceeding that happens before the council.
Fine. So whatever the words are there, insufficient time to follow the non-summary proceeding, whatever that is. But the other words I think are important, because we don't wanna s- limit the city manager. To having to establish immediacy or imminency, which people can argue what that means. We want the city manager reasonably determined or determines that the danger is such that there's not enough time to go through the administrative procedure. That's my proposal.
And I, I suspect it's important we get this right because potentially someone could be in for a very large assessment of fees. At some point. And that could cause issues. However. However, we legally cover that should be done right, that's all.
That's exactly why I'm focused on those words, cause I don't want us to spend fifty thousand dollars abating somebody's property and then find out that they win on a challenge that we didn't follow the right words.
You're muted, John.
I understand that intent and I, I have some language that we can incorporate there, so.
Okay.
If, if that's the council's pleasure, I'm happy to do it.
Well, I believe that is the council's pleasure. Can we make a motion to, Bruce, are you comfortable having your motion? Which was seconded by Mikey come to a vote at this point?
I, I am, except we, as a legal question, ca- can we vote on and adopt in a first reading an ordinance that isn't yet written? Or do we have to have the exact words when we say we approve this?
I think when we get it back for, for the second reading, if it's not what we agreed to, we can change it at that point.
Fair enough.
Is that correct, John?
That's correct. If, if the language doesn't meet, uh, doesn't comport with your understanding, you would reintroduce the ordinance and we'd come back to again for introduction.
Well, then, then with whatever we just said by way of amendment, that, that's my motion.
Okay. Uh, we have a first and a second, and I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote at this point.
And.
Go ahead, John.
Before we get there, can I read the title of the ordinance that we're?
Please do. That would be appropriate.
Um, this, this is an ordinance of the city of Malibu, amending chapter eight point two eight of Title Eight of the Malibu municipal code concerning nuisance abatement. And finding the same exempt from the California environmental quality. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mayor Pritham Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilor Fair?
Yes.
Councilor Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, next item is number two A, new business establishing. Next item is number 2A, new business establishing a homelessness task force. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do.
So pleased you could make it, Susan. We'd have nothing to do without you today.
Well, thank you for having this meeting. I was really happy that I was able to bring the nuisance item so quickly to you all. So, but here we are for our original item. Establishment on homeless task force. Next slide. All right, so at your last meeting, you voted in favor of establishing a homeless task force. And it was agreed that there would be 10 members with two appointments per councilperson. We also discussed that they would be free to identify their own chair and vice chair. And they could form subcommittees or ad hoc committees as needed. I'm suggesting that they meet at least monthly, kind of envisioning that maybe in the beginning, they may need to meet more frequently, but we'll leave that up to them. But at least monthly, and that after each time they meet, I'm suggesting that they come to the city council and provide an update during that portion of the agenda where updates from commissions and committees are provided so that you can stay informed on their progress. Next slide. So the proposed charter, we pulled together from the comments from the last meeting. One of the comments was that they draft, that they review the draft updated homelessness strategic plan based on the goals and objectives that were put together by the working group to see if, you know, how these look, if they like them, if they want to tweak them and bring them back to the city council for adoption. Also review the concept need and possible implementation of an alternative sleeping location. Develop a plan to mitigate public safety and environmental impacts, particularly fires related to homeless encampments. Explore new ideas and research strategies used by their jurisdictions and identify best practices that could be implemented in Malibu. And of course, make recommendations to the city council on all of the above matters. Next slide. Other things that I wanted to bring forward is to consider also waiving the city council policy 48. We understand there may be some individuals that council members want to appoint to this task force that are already serving on another commission, so that is something that you can do if you so choose. And then the other thing that came up after this item was already posted was that you could consider directing the task force to review a revised camping ordinance, which actually could fall under one of the existing charter items that are already there, but you could consider directing them to do that, since I know Bruce had one drafted and John Cotty has drafted something as well, and perhaps you have the task force, you know, look at that and bring something forward to the council. Next slide. I think that's it. I think that's all I have.
I'm fairly confident we have members of the public on this one.
Yeah.
We have two speakers. They are Paul Elder and Rui Israel. We'll hear from Paul Elder first.
Thank you. Are you available, Reverend Elder?
Yes, I am. I'm Reverend Paul Elder, 28211 Pacific Coast Highway. And I just want to add a couple of things. I've served on two or three task forces concerning this subject and was one of the founding members of the Malibu Task Force on homelessness, responsible for getting services via social workers from the people's concern, which is now run by the county, by the city, of course. It's a great move by the city. I've worked with homeless people in this area for the last five years on a one-to-one basis on the ground. I know most of them pretty well. And as a side, Susan's comments about clearing clearing old sites, I had a group of homeless people themselves and we would go out in those days with Mike Finan, rest his soul, and clean up those sites so that the homeless were actually doing the work for the city. And I think that was a good idea and could be done again when you're talking about that. In all the time that I've been with the city on this subject, we've been unable to advance any of the proposals that have been brought out. And I'm worried that we're just kicking the can down the road again by appointing another committee who may not come up with a solution either. There is a solution to the homeless problem. It's very simple. You build houses for them. That's the only solution to their homeless problem. And that can be done. And it could be done on city property in the city of Malibu very quickly and at a fairly low cost. And if that were done, if we made some homes available, say tiny homes like has been done in the valley, we could solve the whole problem because we would have beds then available for people who were camping in wrong places. And it would take away the Boise, the Boise law about having shelter available if you try to move people. Two years ago, you were given a complete proposal detailing how this could be done at a very low cost. And a tiny home project could be built in six months with building and safety cooperation and the donated land. And I think if you bring up that proposal, you'll find that it covers everything that you were about to talk about and it would be very easy to implement.
Paul, it's about your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Elder.
And next we'll hear from Rui.
Can you hear us, Rui?
Yeah, I'm here. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Thank you so much for taking this issue on. Obviously, the issue of homelessness is one of the top issues, if not in the county, in the state, but across the nation. It's a very sad issue, but it's obviously an issue that we all have to deal with. So it's a difficult one and I, unfortunately, I'm not as optimistic as Paul with regards to having a simple solution. I think people are gonna be upset with any suggestion of where those tiny homes or any sort of shelter is gonna be, but that's definitely something we have to get together and do because it's, as Paul did say, it's part of the Boise case and so especially here in Malibu, everyone has an opinion about where those shelters should be. But I'm mostly speaking here today because I'm hoping that in addition to just the camping and encampments, we also address something that I've talked to several of the council members about, and that's streets like Trancas where we're starting to see a lot of vehicles parking for days, if not weeks, at a time. I'm concerned that those areas are gonna turn into more encampments and so there are vehicles where people are camping in their vehicle. Right now, there are no overnight parking signs on those streets. So, you know, the law enforcement, their hands are tied in terms of what they can do with those individuals and they just continue to park there. I see now it's like more every day. There's RVs, there's vans. So if that can also be addressed during the time that this special committee meets, that'd be great. So, good luck. It's a very, very difficult situation and hoping that we move forward in a positive way.
Thank you, Rui. Okay, I believe we're back to council comments. Who would like to go first? Who would like to be the first to appoint? Karen, you're up. Follow my Bruce.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I would like to thank Paul Elder and Rui Israel for speaking. I'm a little bit surprised we didn't have more public speakers. Rui, not long ago, thanks to you, I became aware of the parking issue on Trancas. There may be other streets as well, and I think we need to address that with no overnight parking signs there. Since those are city streets and not the highway, I believe we can do what we've already done and put signs up, no parking midnight to 5:00 AM. So I'd like to see us get that ball rolling as soon as possible. Reverend Elder, I respect you immensely. I don't entirely agree with your concept of tiny homes. I believe there are other ways for us to address the issue. I don't know how specific we need to get at this moment, but personally, I don't think that is the answer for us and I don't think it's going to be feasible for several reasons. Community resistance. And I don't think it addresses the underlying issue. I have heard presentations about housing first. I understand that, but I think we need to delve more deeply into how individuals ended up unhoused in our community. And I hugely respect the amount of work and the kind of work that our service provider is doing for us. And I'd like to see that continue for sure. Personally, I think an ASL, alternative sleeping location, is a better fit for this community and provides a path for people to enroll in services and work on getting housed or work on reconnecting with their home community, work on getting employment. So should I make my two appointments? Are we there yet or should we circle back?
If you'd like to, you can go right ahead.
Okay, I asked these two people quite a while ago and I reconfirmed with them recently. And they are interested in serving. And those two people are Paul Davis and Chris Frost. And I will add with that, since Chris Frost currently serves on the Public Safety Commission and in fact chairs it, that I would be in favor of amending city policy number 38 so that
Forty-eight.
Excuse me, forty-eight, so that he can devote. And there may be others as well. And that's it for the moment.
Thank you, Karen. Bruce?
Okay, so a few comments. First of all, I don't know we can appoint, literally appoint people until we've voted to create the task force properly, but that's just the technicality. And as far as the waiver of that policy, I'd like to know who the ten are that are being proposed before I decide to vote one way or the other on that because if it's for one or two people, great, but I don't want it to become a general, a general thing. So here are my comments. First of all, as far as the public speakers, before I talk about what we're doing specifically, I don't agree from a legal standpoint with the lay opinions that are being expressed about Boise. We've talked about that before. And the parking issue can be resolved, as Karen said, by no, if it's in the city, by no parking signs, as well as by the ordinance that Steve and I have proposed. The parking issue, vans, RVs, cars could be solved overnight with that ordinance because they would have to go, as would a lot of other things, without tiny homes and without an ASL or shelter. But in any event, I fully approve doing this, creating this task force. I would like to see added to their charter that they develop and recommend a strategy for the robust solicitation of input from Malibu residents, respecting the options available for protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community from dangers associated with homelessness and for providing assistance to Malibu residents experiencing homelessness. And in that regard, I really, really loved Karen's formulation of we need to figure out how individuals experiencing homelessness have become a part of our community or worse that effect. Because I think that is, I think understanding how our community has homeless is important in understanding what we are going to be legally required to do as well as in a lot of people deciding what they think morally we should do. I think that there may be a different approach depending on how people are experiencing homelessness or why they are in Malibu. So I have two appointments that I'll be making when we have a committee formed.
Would you like to name them?
Sure. Deborah Benton and Bill Sampson. Deborah is a venture capitalist and Bill is a lawyer, and I think they'll provide a very professional approach to these issues that will be driven by facts and evidence at less than by tugging on heartstrings.
Thank you, Bruce. I don't I see Mikey's hand is still raised or was raised?
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to not leave it up and down. I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not good with the little yellow hand thing.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Susan. You have worked so hard on all of this. And much appreciated. It's a lot. We know that. Everything to do with homelessness is overwhelming. And so thank you for all of your efforts and yes, we know we need to support you and move forward and hopefully this is a step where we have a group that's focused on nothing but with bringing actual actionable things to the city council to act on. The city council is extremely, it covers a lot of different things, makes it hard for us to focus on one issue, so I hope in this is the way. I appreciate Paul and Rui's comments, our two public speakers. I agree with you, Paul. I hope we're not kicking the can down the road. To me, this is a way to hopefully unlogjam where we're at right now and have a group just focus on this and work with the community, as Bruce said, work with outside experts, work with other people very concerned in the town about this issue. And one thing I want to say is that there's a lot of people concerned and a lot of people that are fairly educated. I hope everyone that's appointed to this task force is educated because just catching up takes a while. I've been involved in this issue for a long time and I can tell you, it evolves fast. Things are changing. Things are changing right now with what our sheriff's doing, with what Judge Carter's trying to do. Things are changing. So it is, it is a, it is a ever-changing world, particularly in trying to figure out this giant societal issue. So for a couple of people at least that I know that wanted to be on this task force and probably won't, I doubt, I don't know if everyone will be named to it. It seems not likely. You still have a huge role in this. And I very much encourage this task force to reach out and listen to all voices. And as Susan said, form ad hocs so that, you know, groups, smaller groups can go out and get a lot of the work done and make things happen. Because meeting once a month or however often it is, it's really hard to get a lot of work done sometimes. So, thank you. Rui, you and I have talked and I have followed up with the city concerning the no parking thing. At Trancas, staff has been working on it. I know our city manager is aware of it too. No one's ignoring it. We're definitely trying to get to it. So I just want to reassure thanks for your little heart, reassure you that it's not forgotten at all. It's just, you know, it's only so much bandwidth to get everything done at once. But it is not forgotten at all and it's always in my inbox, always reminding me and occasionally I'll hit up our city manager and we'll correspond on it. So it's not forgotten at all. And you're right, this, even though it's not explicitly said, and I don't think it should need to be, safe parking or certainly, and some people have emailed me about Bruce's proposal on camping, all that needs to be explored. Absolutely, 100%. And if it's if it's legal and if it helps with our public safety and homelessness issues, I'm all for it. So absolutely all options need to be expeditiously looked at at this point. expeditiously looked at at this point. It's a little vague to me if policy forty-eight is necessary to amend, but if so, great. I have no issue with that because this is, this feels more like, it's not a commission, maybe it's a committee, it's a task force, a committee. I don't know the legal definition there, but this feels like it has a specific goal that hopefully comes to an end. Hopefully a lot quicker than, say, school separation. So, or else we're in deep trouble. That's, that's a long one. But, you know, so to me, it's not quite the same thing. But if we need to adopt policy forty-eight, I certainly think Chris Frost should be on it. He is involved in it on an extensive level on the ground, middle of the night, all night. I mean, the guy is, he's got amazing, wonderful manic energy. Love him, Chris. I noticed a little minor thing. It says the task force will meet at least once monthly on a day and time of its members choosing. I think we should be a little careful there because it should also be a time that works with staff and also be a time that works with the public. So, you know, I, I think we, we may not be able to satisfy all that, but, you know, if they're all nine AM meetings, that might be hard for the public then to, to chime in, or maybe they can move around. I don't know the answer, but I just wanted to make sure that it just wasn't the members choosing because what if we're all, you know, people stay up all night or something? I don't want midnight. Not suggesting that will happen, but. And those are my comments. I think it's great that we're going to get this going. And when we legally form this or whatever we need to do that, my two picks are going to be Bill Winneker and Wayne Cohen, mainly because I talk with them nonstop on this issue and have been for quite a while. I'm, we're engaged on an ongoing basis. They contact me continually. And not that I don't talk with other people that have huge value, but it was notable to me, it was very obvious that these are the people I talk to sometimes more than once a week. You know, throwing out ideas, trying to figure this out and things for it. So. And those are my comments for now. Oh.
Can, can I have the second name again, please, Mikey?
Wayne Cohen.
Wayne Cohen.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Steve?
Okay, I'm unmuted. Good. I agree with a lot of what's been said today. I, I do not believe the majority of the residents in, in Malibu want to see a homeless shelter in the city. I think that most of the residents I talked to understand that we just don't have the infrastructure to support that here. We don't have the hospitals and the mental health facilities to support that. And back to what I think Karen said in the, in the last meeting, I don't think many residents want to have a homeless shelter next to their neighborhood. So I think that's going to be a very difficult sell here in the city. I do want the task force to come in and take a fresh look at everything. I had some conversations over the last week with some of the folks that are feeding the homeless two, three, four times a week here in Malibu. And they sort of admitted that what they were busing some people in. They say that they're busing them back out after they're done feeding them. But if you ask the sheriff, he will tell you some of those folks are staying around Malibu. So it's just, you know, we've got to take a look at that stuff and make sure that we're, all of our actions are going in the same direction, right? That if we're trying to clean it up over here, we're not doing something on this side that is going to create a bigger problem. And I want the task force to take a fresh look at everything we've done. I think that was mentioned by Susan in her, in her comments. Especially, you know, trying to take a look at a location outside of Malibu similar to what Beverly Hills does and what Manhattan Beach does. It's been done in other cities. And if our task force we have right now probably started looking at that three or four years ago, we might have that situation solved already. So I'm going to appoint two people and my appointees are Kelly Presses and Scott Dietrich.
Okay. 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 Like, oh, Karen, I see your hand raised.
I have a question. Is it a requirement that these appointees live within the boundaries of the city?
As I drafted, I, I drafted based on other task forces that we have created and they always just say nine oh two six five and people who live or work. And in fact, in the past, when it wasn't stated that way the first time, it was amended to be that way. So there must be a reason why it tends to fall in that way. But if you disagree, that's fine too. I just noticed that that was the pattern in our past task forces.
Okay, so it's different from commissions?
Yeah. Yeah, we, and we said live or work because I think that was something that stood out to me in looking at past task force, you know, charters. Because you could have, you know, people with businesses here who have a strong interest in this problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Bruce, I see that you raised your hand.
Just to add to what Susan just said, by way of to refresh people's recollection, when we first, when we voted to actually come back and form this formally, Paul wanted the ability to appoint others outside the city. And the explanation was there may be some very knowledgeable people who don't formally live in the city. And I thought we had reached agreement at that point in time that when we came back with this, it was not going to be limited to the city. In fact, I didn't think it was going to be limited to nine oh two six five, but I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that if Paul is. But I had remembered Paul might have wanted somebody from the county, but maybe I'm wrong in that recollection.
I'm, I'm very, thank you, Bruce. I'm very, I remember that very well. And I got to tell you that the, part of the reason that I have spent as much time meeting with the Palisades in Santa Monica and West Hollywood and today going over to see, I've had several meetings with the county now and, and today Mikey and I visited a, a, a center in the valley was because of Kelly's energy and, and forcing me to do it. So it's, I'm a lot better educated than I was when I got elected on this subject. And I, I, I definitely owe Kelly the thanks for that. And I, I want to, so nine oh two six five is, is a good area as far as I'm concerned. And I would like to name, and I want to thank also the people who who have come and commented and have taken the time to talk to me. Were way too numerous to mention, but I think for myself, after we adopt this, I would like to appoint Ian Robyn. Ian is an attorney. He lives in Malibu West. He's young, has, has a new daughter. And he is concerned with this question. And, and the other person, there's a woman named Carrie Davis, who's the president of the Homeowners Association in Big Rock, which has had problems in the, in the slopes adjacent to the neighborhoods there. And I think she will be good on it also. So those are the two that I am, I'm asking to appoint. So I think we've agreed that we want to do this. I think we've agreed that we want to waive number forty-eight, policy number forty-eight. So I did a motion to adopt the staff recommendation. Is that, or we want to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash forty-three?
Bruce has got his hand up.
Bruce, I can't see your hand. I'm sorry for some reason. So please make a motion or talk.
Yeah, no, I will. I'll make a motion to approve the, what was recommended in the staff report, but with the one addition that the charter include creating a robust process for obtaining resident input as to these issues. And the other thing is I just want to say, I, this is a stellar group, all tendencies. I know, I know whoever one of these people are and this is a phenomenal group, so I'm very impressed.
I'll second Bruce's motion.
First, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Kelsey, can you call the roll for us, please?
Mayor Procham Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you so much.
All right.
I believe it's a point, it's appropriate at this point to adjourn the meeting.
Are you doing that, Paul?
I'm doing it. I'm adjourning the meeting.
Mayor Grisanti, I do want to just check with the city attorney. John, do they need to make their appointments now or is it appropriate that they made them before they approved the resolution?
You know, I hate to exalt formal or substance. I think it's clear from the record tonight that the council intended to establish the committee and to appoint the members that each have selected tonight, the two members that each have selected tonight. So I don't think we need anything more formal than that.
Good question, Kelsey.
Thank you, John.
All right, we're out of here.
Thank you very much. And Bruce, I didn't quite meet your, your deadline, but I, I know that the, the city employees who are have other things to go to will be appreciative of our being done at this point.